Okay, now it just started saying we're recording in progress.
I think so. So my thought was maybe.
Yeah, I had to, I had to press something. Oh, now there's.
Any notes that you might need to write down?
Anthony.
And then, and I do have written notes from the section before, which was about the MND development. Um, but then after the reports I got off.
In the webinar.
Because I had a. Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Collecting bargaining. Yes. Okay.
We should probably always have you as a back.
So. Yeah. Know how to. Yeah. But.
We have, we have seven. Six here.
That was a good. That was a good one. I had read a lot of it, but like just, I need to start. So I think I've got. And then.
I have seven.
Oh, I love the welcoming. Speaker. Speaker of the house. Yeah, he was great. Yeah. Very like encouraging. That was the smart. The torts, you'll be like.
Start texting.
Maybe, I don't know, maybe you'll enjoy the tort talk, but. I think I read the end of it. I'm not going to try to interpret this. Are you doing? Woo.
Now we have four.
There we go.
We needed you.
Geneva. I'm.
For more than one reason.
Wait for the birthday boy.
Oh, yeah. Happy belated birthdays.
It's showing.
I'm like trying to figure out. Is it, do I? Do I just do a work from home and bring my.
We don't have to use these anymore.
Yeah. I mean, I hate doing that right off. Certification. So I may say to my podcast, they like up locked up this more.
Park District, you have a quorum too?
And then maybe.
You do.
Okay.
You have a quorum.
Awesome.
I mean, I don't think, because I.
What a voice. I'm not sure who asked the question though.
It's just me, you know, kind of a looming voice in the background.
Me, us, the great and powerful.
Yeah.
Are you.
We are in progress. We don't.
Okay.
B A T. I don't know why.
Okay. You want to call your meeting to order first? Park District. Want to do that?
Sure.
I will call the special board meeting for the Batavia Park District to order on Tuesday, May 25th at 6:03. Debbie, could you please call a roll?
Yes. Riley.
Here.
Connolly. Tillman.
Molly's logging on. Sorry.
Tillman.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
And Molly is here. She's saying by chat. Thank you.
So we have a quorum. Okay, go ahead.
I'll call to order the special committee of the whole meeting for a joint meeting between the Batavia Park District, Batavia City for Tuesday, March 25th, 2021 at 6:04. First item on our agenda is roll call.
Miller. Miller. Rosado. Back.
Here.
Knott.
Here.
Chantet. Dolpha.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron. Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay. Uwer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
And Vogel Singer.
Here.
We have 10 out of 14.
Okay, we have necessary quorum to conduct business. Next up on the agenda is item number two, which is a discussion on the Batavia River Corridor Master Plan update. And we have the Hitchcock Design Group with us tonight.
Yes, I will just turn it over to Lacey Lawrence and I will stop my screen share so that she can start her presentation if she would like.
All right, great. Thank you. A minute, see if I can share my screen. I'm Lacey Lawrence from Hitchcock Design Group. Also joining me tonight will be John Witty from WBK Engineering. So the reason we're all here today is to review the analyze and connect phase outcomes for the Batavia Fox River Corridor Master Plan. We presented a few weeks ago, just kind of intro, but the reason why we're all here today is, again, just wanted to restate our purpose to develop a master plan for the Fox River Corridor through Batavia that focuses on making river connections, providing river activities, improving river ecology, developing the river economy brand, and evaluating the dam and depot pond opportunities. So part of the planning process is broken up into these four different phases. So today we're going to be presenting on the analyze summaries and the connect phase summaries. And we are currently working in the envision phase, which will be broken down into two kind of small phases. So the first phase will be evaluating dam and depot pond alternatives. So we're in the process right now. We have a meeting tomorrow with the task force and then we'll be coming to you. When is it? June 15th to present the framework plans that come out of those meetings. And then we'll also be doing an envision for the whole corridor, which will be from Fabian to the south boundary of Batavia. And so that would be more like in the fall, like September time. So our vision is kind of stretched out over a few months, mainly because we want to time it well with IDNR. There is grant funding that we hear is going to become available for opportunity to modify, remove, or improve the Batavia Dam. And so we need to kind of align our deliverables with July. So that's kind of the reason for the two different phases with that. And after that, we move into implements. We'll create a detailed action plan on how to enact any proposed improvements that's concluding funding opportunities, grant opportunities to look for, and how to phase it over the next 10, 20 years.
Sorry, Lacey, would you mind putting that in presentation mode? Because it's
Oh, yeah.
full screen for us? I think F5 might do it.
Which one? Sorry.
It might be F5. I.
F5.
Forget off the top of my head.
That was looking at view. Which is play some page. If I just turn it off, does it make it any better? Any bigger or no? You're seeing still a small kind of screen.
Since this is.
Like the plus next to hand.
You're actually not in PowerPoint. You can only hit the zoom up there to make it bigger. So.
Okay. There's, so is that still legible? I think this kind of is maxed out. I can make it on the screen.
You're up 125. You keep going up.
Does any of it come off the page for you?
No. Well, that page is about it. There we go. Kind of good.
Okay. So with that, reviewing kind of the schedule. So again, we have our meeting tomorrow to kind of review envision phase deliverables for dam and depot pond. And then we'll come back to the Joint Board and Council to review those alternatives and then targeting a late June community engagement phase. So we'll have a public open house that will have concepts, multiple or single concepts to garner feedback from the community on their preferred options and preferences. So with that, we're going to first start within the analyze summary. So kind of in this phase, we're going to be reviewing history, the resources, planning documents that we reviewed, trends in river recreation, as well as profiling active river communities that we think would be similar to Batavia. And then we'll go into connect phase. So first, I'm going to actually kind of breeze through a lot of this pretty fast because we have a short timeline and 122 slides to get through. So we're just going to try to hit the highlights and kind of focus on areas where we think we should spend more time, which is the dam and depot pond alternatives report, as well as the outcomes of our summary, our online survey, stakeholder interviews, and then the workshop. So with that, his, the history of Batavia was settled back in 1833. Originally, Big Woods was renamed Batavia in 1840. So it's actually one of the oldest cities in Kane County. Batavia, from the beginning, has always had an industrial character, whether that was farm implements, windmill factories, and also produced flour, ice, lumber, paper, and stone. I'll actually focus some more on stone in some later slides. And one unique fact that actually was built rocket components that took astronauts to the moon in the 1960s. Obviously nicknamed the Windmill City. It was home to six American-style windmill companies throughout the years. And windmills that are made in Batavia can actually be found like all over the world. As I say before, due to the natural limestone deposits in Batavia, was actually nicknamed Rock City. And a lot of the city, the stone that was quarried in Batavia was actually used to rebuild a lot of the buildings in Chicago when it was built after the fire. Not only is it industrial, but it was home to three different railroad lines, obviously before the automobile became the transportation choice, preference. And still, even to this day, Batavia remains home to over 200 manufacturing plants, research warehouses, including Fermilab. Batavia also has a very highly desired school district, and it's also home to Mooseheart, which is a residential childcare facility. So some of the resources, this includes natural resources, demographics, cultural resources, social. So we'll kind of run through all of these. So just kind of a run through of the demographics. Obviously, we see a recent downward trend in population, as well as an upward trend in more diversity, racial diversity. In general, households are decreasing, the number of families in Batavia are decreasing, which is actually opposite to what is the national average. We're actually seeing 0.64, 0.72% increases for household and families nationwide. The median age in Batavia is trending upwards. We have an aging population. All the age groups, you know, over 20 are increasing. The largest increase is over 65. Those under 19 is actually decreasing. So when you look at the planning, planning corridor, which is, as I said, from Fabian to the south boundary, and really focusing on, you know, the major street, kind of east and west of the river. So we look at the land use. Obviously, primary land use is parks and open space, as well as public facilities, which will serve us really well when we move into the envision phase, as well as mixed use downtown, some light industrial, and some single and multifamily. As I say before, a lot of the space along the river within our planning corridor is actually public owned. So we have Laurelwood Park, Batavia Riverwalk, Clark Island, and the Herald Hall Quarry Beach. So there's some photographs of some of the public spaces that we visited during our initial site work and inventory these parcels as well. There you can see the dam in its current condition. The Peg Bon Center. And then Clark Island. This is actually the trail that's kind of near Quarry Beach. We look at the TIF districts. There's three TIF districts, TIF districts that actually touch our riverfront planning corridor area. So TIF 1, TIF 3, and TIF 6. TIF 1 actually expires in the next few years, which is number one. Right here, it's in red. TIF 3 actually expires in 2039. It doesn't generate kind of the scale that we need to fund improvements. And then TIF 6 doesn't actually touch the river, but obviously we can move funds between TIF districts as needed. Some of the activities that can be supported through TIF increment funds are public infrastructure, so streets, streetscapes, public parking, and other public infrastructure, which would include Riverwalk improvements. There's also a historic district that goes through the planning corridor and several places that are in Batavia that are actually on the National Historic Register. One would be the Depot Railroad Depot Museum, which is actually in our planning corridor area. Batavia is also serviced by many expressways and thoroughfares, so I-88, only route 2531. Many municipal airports, so Aurora, DuPage, Midway, O'Hare, most of these are within an hour's drive. And so obviously, Chicago can come all the way to Batavia in less than an hour, or an hour, depending on traffic. And so when we, it'll influence kind of when we go into the envision phase, you know, what we might propose for improvements and what might be utilized by residents versus visitors based on the commute times. This is a map of just your capital improvement projects that are happening this year. So we do see some, obviously, that are within our planning area. So obviously, inventoried all the public parking that's available within the project area. So we know when we're going to put improvements, how much parking is available and at what, you know, minute time zones those are. We also have the maps of the trails. It's actually designated a bike-friendly community, bronze level by the American League of Bicycleists, which is very unique for this area. As well as some of the natural resources, which is the flood rate insurance map. So this shows areas of floodplain and floodway within our planning areas. This is Fabian. And down here is the south boundary. So as you can see, which is actually pretty unique, that most of the floodplain floodway elevations are contained within the banks of the river. So there is a very minimal floodplain floodway outside of the banks. So therefore, we have very steep banks evidently. So there's some areas that are, that do receive floods, which are depot pond. We have some area down here, which is next to the township building. That looks like it's within the 100-year floodplain. Parts of Clark Island, as well as the VFW, which is down here, and the Montessori School, which actually is currently up for sale. And then we inventory the natural wetland and features along the Fox River. So some fringe wetland up here by Fabian, obviously the small little wetland area that's up by the north end of the Riverwalk, and then some areas of the VFW in Clark Island. And then planning documents. We have a whole load of planning documents that we reviewed and summarized. So when we go to propose improvements, we have an understanding of where, what the goals are for the community and region, and how to align some of our objectives. So I'm actually going to try to go through some of these actually pretty fast. Obviously, so the focus is to make the downtown and Fox River feel like a focal point for the community. And so that's one of the factors that actually spurred the development of the Batavia Fox River Master Plan. So parks and open space, again, strengthen the river corridors, a prominent amenity for Batavia. We also reviewed the bicycle plan. So there's several improvements, as you can see, to the bicycle plan, you know, through through our planning area. So obviously, Fox River Trail East, some of these, ideally, it's a heavily used section. You want to increase the width where possible to at least minimum of 10 feet. There is a section of stairs that we've heard through the online survey, as well as stakeholder interviews, to consider options to either avoid the stairs or try to find additional routes that can go along the river, like in this area. As well as the Fox River Trail West. So again, another heavily utilized segment, trying to increase the width to 10 feet where feasible. And then these are on-street sections. So obviously, when we're getting on-street, we want to make sure we have clear markings, signage, and safe pedestrian and, and bicycle access. And some other additional on-street sections. Again, the theme is try to get wider where feasible and try to include clear signage and markings for pedestrians and, you know, vehicles to be observant. Again, we reviewed the strategic plan from the city of Batavia and promote opportunities for downtown redevelopment, install bike lanes, combination of both the shallows, enhance bicycle and walker safety, create a master plan, which is again what we're here for today. And then the Batavia Park District Comprehensive Master Plan, this was actually recently redone. And so again, a lot of these align, which was the reason why we are all here today, to evaluate and prioritize improvements for the riverfront Riverwalk and Depot Pond, again, in progress. And so all of these will be considered, you know, as we go through into the master plan, opportunities for gardens, splash pads, playground renovations. We heard a lot of increased event spaces, restrooms along the trails. And so this is kind of a list of the current capital development projects through the park district. And also through the stakeholder engagement phase, we also reviewed the Kane County Mass, Kane County Forest Preserve Master Plan, and also have a stakeholder interview with them specifically, which is to try to align, because a lot of parcels to the north and the south of our planning area are, or even within the planning area, ownership of the forest preserve, as well as, you know, Fox Valley Park District. And so we want to make sure our objectives align with their future objectives. Because a lot of the outcomes we've heard from stakeholders is that we want to create a regional destination of this whole corridor. So Batavia, not only Batavia, but adjacent communities as well to come to the Fox River Corridor. So just reviewing that plan, a lot of it is renovation of aging infrastructure. There's a new bridge going in. But not a whole lot of other improvements besides, you know, focusing on you know, biodiversity and maintenance for the planting areas and native areas. And also review to the CMAP on to 2050 plan. So their plan is to focus on inclusive growth, resilience, and prioritized investment. So with that, I want to target infill with areas that already have existing development, which would be, you know, the development we're proposing, which is downtown Batavia. We want to support compact walkable communities, increase community greening efforts, expand community neighborhood parks, plan for climate resistance. So this will be important when we're planning any trail extensions. We want to make sure, one other thing we heard from all of our feedback from stakeholders and the public was to make sure that some parts of the Riverwalk can be accessible even in flood stage. So there are some sections that do get flooded out and to be able to have an option to go around those and continue using the Riverwalk. Again, protect and enhance integrity of aquatic systems. So this kind of plays into the ecology of the river and evaluating opportunities for the dam and depot pond. And then we get into the management plan for the Fox River watershed. So again, some of the outcomes of this plan is to prioritize the removal or modifications of dams that create fish that impound, you know, that does not allow for fish migration, as well as passage of non-motorized, you know, boating, whether that be kayak and canoes. Restore the national natural sinuosity and native vegetation to the stream and its banks. Expand public access for river recreation, especially fishing, canoeing, kayaking. We'll learn more about this when we get to our trends and recreation. Establish a well-marked water trail. So the Kankakee River is actually a water chair that's needed water trail. And so this one, I'm sure there's several dams that would be in the way that we would either want to remove or try to create portage access in the event that removal isn't feasible. So that way, everyone can have, not have to do not feel they want to go over the dam for safety reasons. Plus, we don't have to have anyone try to walk a long distance, you know, to try to go in and out of the river to go around the dams. In addition to that, obviously, identify areas where we can expand greenways, provide additional passive and active recreation. Expand high-use segments of the Fox River Trail to 10, and they're even stating up to 12 feet wide here. And also protect groundwater and surface water and sensitive recharge areas, which would be wetlands and floodplains by use of, you know, best management practices, native vegetation, rain gardens, bioswales, et cetera, and try to reduce discharge of stormwater runoff into urban developing agriculture areas. So with that, the next plan we'll be reviewing is the Upper Batavia Dam Alternatives Evaluation Report. So this section, I'll actually turn it over to John Witty from WBK Engineering to review kind of the summary of this report.
Yeah, am I unmuted? Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Yes, Lacey mentioned this, this report was put together in 2000. It discussed, it kind of went through options for dam modifications or removal of the existing dam. There was a team of consultants that put this together. They looked at four main alternatives for dam modification or removal. And then, as Lacey mentioned, all additional concept, concepts will be evaluated as part of our analysis. So we'll get the four concepts. Concept A was a dam modification with natural whitewater rapids. I basically notched the existing dam to very low, to almost removing the existing dam, and then created two intermediate dams between the existing dam and the northern part of Duck Island. So it kind of makes a series of dams instead of one large dam. And this created better fish passage and also also voter access, most safety concern for water, water craft. The one drawback, the rapids were not really whitewater rapids. They were a bit less difficult for competitive events than, say, some of the other alternatives analyzed. And then it was one of the more costly alternatives of the four examples. So this maintained depot pond in its current configuration because the water surface elevation in depot pond would be maintained at its current elevation. My next slide. Concept B was a whitewater rapids bypass channel. It was basically a berm channel between the existing river channel and the senior living, living center. It was, this option placed a lot of recreational traffic adjacent to the senior living retirement community, and also required a berm and levee and raised water supply elevation. So the really, this option is really discounted initially because of the safety concern and the flooding concern with the senior living center. The pros, it did create a nice whitewater course. So. Concept C was an off-river channel. The channel was basically on the south side of the senior living center where the existing cut is right now. Basically widened the existing cut and, which would require also removal and replacement of the existing bridge over the cut to make it wider, and also the existing path on the downstream side of the cut near the river. This was the least costly option and created a desirable whitewater course. The drawbacks was, was that there was a loss of parking to the south and not as the fish passage, because it did maintain the existing dam in its current configuration. So did reduce water surface elevation in depot pond. So this option really did not remove the dam. It just created a whitewater course behind the senior. Did reduce water surface elevation in depot pond, so this option really did not remove the dam, it just created a whitewater course behind the senior living center. And so it didn't, didn't, you didn't have the benefit of fish passage or. Or the water quality aspect, as Lacey mentioned before, then concept D. It's kind of broken out into two concepts, one was a dam lowering where it was kind of, the initial existing dam was lowered. And then a, another dam was created upstream of that, about eight hundred feet, just created a. A very rapid descent and a very quick whitewater course. The pros of that is reduced sediment loading to depot pond and need for dredging because it did. It did kind of disconnect depot pond from the river because the river actually was lowered in this, in this concept. Did create a natural. Passage for fish. And then there's the concept D, that the second alternative under concept D was completely removing the dam and. In its entirety, so what this did is, number one, it disconnected depot pond. Uh, so it lowered the water service elevation at the dam and therefore lowered the water service in depot pond, so in order to maintain depot pond. There would have to be a berm constructed basically from the overlook to Duck Island and then over to the West Bank. So in order to maintain depot pond, pumps will be required to maintain, you know, a surface area, surface water in depot pond. This option also, because it did remove the dam completely, there may be some sediment removal and treatment. Due to suspending sediments for the dam removal. Uh, the water area upstream of the dam decreased just because of the water level, the dam removal and exposed mudbanks. And then it was one of the most expensive options, so. So the alternatives, just kind of to summarize, alternative one was full with whitewater rapid, creating a series of dams upstream. To the end of Duck Island, two was whitewater bypass next to the senior living center. Uh, that was initially discounted or is discounted just because of the dangers to adjacent. Building, alternative three was a whitewater course through the cut, as I mentioned, widening the cut out and creating that whitewater course. Alternative four was a small whitewater rapid with depot pond, so this is removing partially, partially removing the dam. Creating a small dam upstream and creating a very rapid whitewater course, then alternative four A was. Uh, basically removing the dam in its entirety and letting the river kind of slowly gradually. Rise to its original elevation a mile upstream. So just, this is just an example of alternative four, which was dam removal. As you can see, the brown there would be the mudbanks along the river. That would be exposed until the vegetation was established, and then the green area would be the berm between. And the senior living center and the West Bank to maintain a. Water service in depot pond, this would require pumping from the Fox River into depot pond to maintain a, a water level. And then, uh, alternative for the pros, like I said, reduce the sediment load to depot pond and the need for dredging. Creates a fish passage and larger depot pond, the cons, pumps would be required to maintain the service level in depot pond. May necessitate sediment removal, the water upstream of dam decreases. And the river actually, you know, narrows down because the, the banks are exposed and there's a water, lower water service. And then that would extend one mile upstream, and then the rapids are too short for slalom or competitive whitewater, so. This was one of the most expensive options, so the initial, so alternative four A. Um, was complete removal of the pond or the dam. Um, and again, exposed mud flats and the berm will be required, so this would lower. Lower the water service even more than alternative four, so. Creates the greatest amount of floodplain flats and restores the river to its most natural condition, so. So the pros, reduce the sediment load to depot pond and the need for dredging, creates a natural, natural river for fish patches and creates a larger depot pond. The cons, again, pump required to maintain depot pond, sediment removal. Water area upstream of dam decreases and exposes riverbanks and the mudflats. And the rapids too short for bit of whitewater because it would just be a natural, natural river at that point. Then extensive improvements upstream, including ripples to kind of create habitat along the edges of a river. And it's the second most expensive option, so, and just kind of give you an idea of in two thousand, the, uh. The costs associated with these range from five point nine million for the whitewater channel. On the south side of the senior living center to eight point eight million for the most expensive option, so. Um, just kind of give you an idea of the scale, other, the other options were in eight point three to eight point six million, so. Option B was the least expensive at five point nine and the rest were around the range of eight point three to eight point six million, so. Uh, with regards to jurisdictional constraints, you know, the river, the Fox River, there's floodplain and floodway associated with it. And there's no floodplain in, no floodway in depot pond, but there is floodway. And any modification to the dam will require a floodway construction permit and also dam modification permit from IDNR. That's in the Springfield office, the construction permit typically requires twelve, twelve to twelve months to navigate. And the floodplain elevation, just to give you a sense, reduces from six, sixty-eight to six sixty-four, so. Next slide. Again, some of the. The permits and jurisdictions we have to deal with, City of Batavia, King County Water Resources. Uh, Park District, State, IDNR, OWR, as I mentioned, IDNR, threatened and endangered species. Uh, SHPO, state historic preservation, then the federal permits requires a U S Army Corps of Engineers. For the wetlands and also official wildlife service for threatened and endangered species, so.
Okay, yep, I duplicated it, there you go. Oh, and this is where I can touch base also. So, um, obviously when we start moving through our implementation phase of the planning effort. When we outline projects, proposed projects, and how much it will cost, and then a general idea of when to initiate different activities throughout the. The process, we'll also be looking at funding opportunities that might help. Fund and support these projects, and so this is kind of a, a start of a list, you know, that we have used in the past that have. Could be used to fund various riverfront Riverwalk improvements, so anywhere from, you know, bicycle trails. To river restoration, dam removal, et cetera. So that kind of wraps up our resources in planning document sections, and now we'll kind of go through some of the current active river trends that are. We reviewed three different fitness trend reports, so this one is the Worldwide Survey of Fitness Trends for twenty twenty-one, so it actually evaluates. Um, outcomes from twenty twenty, this was performed by American College of Sports Medicine. So generally ranks fitness category, you know, long-term fitness trends, so right now. Outdoor fitness is currently ranked fourth, which is actually up from thirteenth from just the last year, so these are produced yearly every year. Another report can summarize and support fitness and leisure activities, now these are summary from twenty nineteen, so the. The data from twenty twenty, which would be summarized in twenty twenty-one report, hasn't been released yet. But in general, so fishing ranked fourth, hike, hiking is ranked in the top ten, kayaking and canoeing also ranked in the top ten. Other water and outdoor fitness actually saw increases between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So recreational kayaking increased, mountain biking, non-paved surface biking, road surface biking. Fly fishing, freshwater fishing, day hiking and trail running, so trail running and day hiking seeing the most increase from last year. And the only kind of decrease from last year was canoeing, which saw a decrease in one and a half percent, so again, this is from twenty nineteen. From what I understand, I was the one with the pandemic, I actually heard that canoeing, actually saw a significant increase, kayaking and canoeing. Um, so we'll hear about those, you know, when the next report comes out. And then the last one was the twenty twenty outdoor participation report, so this is by the Outdoor Foundation. So these are the top five ranked outdoor activities currently, so running, jogging, trail running, fishing, hiking, biking and camping. And so a lot of these are kind of reoccurring, you know, every year, these are generally the top five that we've kind of seen. And then with that, we'll run through these quick, so these are project profiles from other active river communities that have. Um, similar objectives, similar improvements, similar objectives, so they either have some more access navigation. Contain bake stabilization, beautification, or have the objective of improving river health. Some of these projects include some sort of dam removal modification, they also include additional recreation and programming. As well as community development framework. These, these, these project profiles also kind of target the same market that we're looking to here. Which is what we heard from stakeholders and the board, where the primary focus of the riverfront Riverwalk improvements would be residents first. As well as having non-resident visitors be a secondary market. So this is kind of the list of our active river communities that we profiled, so I'm just going to run through these quickly. So this one is Chicago, Illinois, so they have shopping, dining, they actually have continuous access along the river, which we're hoping to. To do in Batavia, obviously different scales being in a densely urban downtown Chicago compared to Batavia, but still a lot of. Great development that came out of it and that we can use, you know, as a basis for design when we go through the envision phase. Also City of Aurora, this is River Edge Park. So the River Edge Park, it says canoe launch, canoe shoots, there's a dam that's also in downtown Aurora, they have the Fox River Trail. And they're installing a, a new bridge that allows access to the island, you can see in the picture. And then a lot of parks that are adjacent to rivers, shopping, dining, theater, because this is also in the downtown area. Naperville was another one of our key com- communities with their Riverwalk, you know, continuous walking path. Additional recreation amenities like amphitheater gathering spaces, playgrounds, they also have Quarry Lake. Sutting Hills Concert Areas. Elgin. Um, so we also looked at this when we're going through envision phase as well, Festival Park, they have Riverfront Promenade, again, the trail extends all the way up through to Elgin. Destination playgrounds, Walton Island, events, dining, shopping. Waukesha, Wisconsin. I'm just going to go through these even faster, Indianapolis. That canal walk, again amphitheater, a lot of similar amenities that are provided on the Riverwalk, Dayton, Ohio. And then Greenville, South Carolina. And so this is their, their dam. So the falls on reedy trails, gardens, they have their iconic bridge, which you could just see right through here. And then obviously establishing connections to downtown, the zoo, they have a lot of public art infrastructures. And then Salida, Colorado, so this one is more for kind of the whitewater course that they have through downtown. In addition to picnicking, playgrounds, bandshells, pathways, and then Bend also has a similar kind of. Whitewater shoot for tubing, surfing, kayaking, they also have scenic trails, parks, kayak launches. Kind of to wrap up our analyze, so Batavia has a very rich history and deep connections to the river. They have interconnected regional trail network with key public-owned open spaces situated adjacent to the river. Outdoor recreation is enjoyed by many in the area and has been a longstanding pastime with recent upward trends. Permitting for any improvements for the dam or depot pond could be challenging and lengthy, but yet definitely feasible. Um, and many similar situated riverfront communities are currently refocusing their attention on the river and leveraging this natural asset. As a tool to attract and retain residents, visitors, and reinvigorate their downtowns. And so Batavia can too, so with that, I'm actually going to pause for maybe a few minutes, because that was a lot to get through. If anybody has any questions on the analyze phase, and then we have the other remaining connect phase to go through.
The only thing I would ask is that we get a copy of this so that we make sure we can get it on our website and the city website and.
Being recorded, or and, and this.
This, right, and then all of us as council members get a copy of it, we can go back and review it.
Great, maybe most of this is something, obviously you live and work in Batavia all day, so this. Might be a lot of repetition, so the connect phase actually will be kind of interesting to go through, so this is our. The outcome of our survey, so currently our survey is closed, it was open for two weeks and. We still have our website, which is available, here's the web address, so you can still find updates to the project. You know, calendar, any documents that we want to also publish can be available and accessed here as well. And as well as our social media hashtag to use. So the online survey, again, open two weeks, had almost five hundred survey respondents, so it was approximately two percent of the total Batavia residents. Majority of residents that took the survey, eighty-seven percent were actual residents of Batavia, others were nearby or adjoining communities. The average median, median age group that took the survey was thirty-five to fifty, and the second highest age group was the fifty to seventy range. Many of the survey respondents were households with children or households with more than one adult without children. Some of the survey trends that came out, so. The very, so most of the survey respondents are very familiar with the Riverfront Study Area, so ninety percent respondents said that they were either familiar or very familiar. And eighty-nine percent, they said that the Fox River is actually very important to the identity of Batavia. When I asked the same question about the importance of the dam, it kind of, kind of split results, fifty-four percent said the dam is not important. To Batavia, the identity, and then forty-six percent respectively said it is actually very important to the identity of Batavia. Uh, many of the respondents said that they have participated or visited the parks more than four times per year, so the parks are well utilized within the Riverfront Study Area. So again, that map that we showed kind of through the analyze, like Laurel Wood, Riverwalk, Clark Island. A more majority of respondents currently walk, run or bike around Batavia, so eighty percent of respondents said they walk in their neighborhood. Seventy-seven percent said they use Batavia pathways and forty-four, one percent said that they utilize Batavia parks for when they walk or on their bike. And only occasional kind of canoe and kayak and other water recreation use. So fifty-two percent of respondents that say they do kayak or canoe, use the Fox River in or near Batavia. And then the other forty-eight percent use other streams outside of Batavia, and so this was kind of an open comment. That they could provide additional comments, a lot of them range like Mississippi River and National, Nationwide, Nationalwide, plus some other rivers that are in Illinois. Overall, a majority of respondents are satisfied with the facilities and safety and access to parking currently on the Riverwalk Riverfront. Um, I'm at least satisfied with the appearance, directional signage and access to restrooms and seating, and so this is kind of something we also heard. When we did stakeholder interviews, specifically access to restrooms. So more, they were looking for more native landscaping, riverbank stabilization, we heard erosion could be a reoccurring issue in some areas of the Riverwalk. Providing additional food and dining options and festival spaces, providing additional restrooms. Providing boat and kayak and canoe rentals, as well as establishing more trail connections and bike facilities along the Riverwalk. Majority of respondents said that they would support riverfront improvements, so eighty-six percent. With the objective to enhance the heart of downtown, again, what responded to beginning is, most of them responded, they want to see. The improvements reflected and providing residents with more to do, and seventy-one percent responded saying to provide visitors with more to do. They also want to support local business and the economy, connect downtown to the river, improve the image of the Riverwalk and provide additional land, so sixty-five percent. Land and sixty percent said water recreation. And the last kind of point was a majority responded that they are likely to support a tax levy to fund improvement, so that's eighty-two percent. Of the two percent of Batavia resident respondents. And now we get into our stakeholder interviews. So we did two days worth of one-on, not one-on-one, but it was a group like they had somewhere between three to five attendees. It was a half an hour kind of interview. Attendees ranged from government, property owners, business owners, residents, special interest groups, environmental groups. And so kind of these are the discussion questions that we asked each group to respond to kind of the overarching trends that we heard from all of the groups when we aggregated the responses. Most of respondents said to maintain the water elevations of Depot Pond and obviously the preference to not rely on active or continual pumping. We also heard obviously to remove or modify Batavia dam for safety as well as improve ecology and health of the river. We did have some comments that said they prefer to see the dam repaired or to remain. Most wanted to see a natural look for the river, any improvements as well as again erosion, stabilization, restoration, native restoration of riverbanks and establish additional native areas along the river for for people to enjoy. We also heard obviously same from the board that communication, education with residents during the planning process is going to be key to the success of the master plan. As well as incorporating wayfinding and access points with that signage so that way they're clear. Establishing additional connections, pathways, trails. Again, some areas are difficult to navigate or can flood. And this obviously many of the people shared a vision for a flu free flowing river corridor all the way down like to Aurora. As well as providing additional open views to the river and the increased visibility where feasible. They also heard like to see additional gathering spaces for special events, social gatherings and programming. We have a peg bound center, but they would like to see additional areas provided for additional events. Future development. We'd like to see obviously any new development along the river to focus and face the river as well as allowing access down to the river. Like to see some additional outdoor dining options, restrooms. Again, the statement of creating a regional destination with Batavia as well as adjacent communities to come to the Fox River Corridor. And we also heard additional comp community being Grand Rapids, Michigan, with some of their art installations and development that they have in their downtown. Again, in general, some people feel that the river is currently underused for water-based recreation. You want to reduce some flooding. So this was about the bike path. There's a section of bike path that can flood, can walk by the stairs. Would like to see Clark Island be better utilized. We also heard limit taxpayer referendum for funding improvements. As well as look for opportunities for public-private partnership and try to bring additional visitors and residents to the downtown. And then I'll probably skip over most of this. This was a summary from our last meeting, which we did a workshop with the board and council, and we asked you these kind of three focus questions. And kind of the summary was to provide a detailed action plan with key milestone dates and associated costs. We want long-term action as well as short-term improvements that can be accomplished with little investment to show progress. And again, community outreach and communication being key to success. Again, create a regional destination in conjunction with adjacent river communities. Improve recreation opportunities and programming and improve ecology of the river. So obviously the main takeaway was to keep depot pond and to remove and or modify Batavia dam. So with that, this is kind of the end of the presentation. So I will, we have a couple of minutes for any questions kind of whether we want to review any of the analyzer, connect summary outcomes.
Question? Okay.
Yep.
Hey, my name is Molly.
Molly, yep.
You can hear me. Hi, Molly. Molly, thanks very much. This is, this is really helpful information. I guess my biggest question is, when I see a 2% survey response rate, how do you, how do you use that? Is that typical? How would we get more input? You know, what do you use with the 2%?
Yeah, um, actually, that's a fairly good response rate, you know, for some water communities like around 500, 600 is actually a good, you know, turnout. Obviously, it's not going to be our only community engagement through the process. So we're hoping, you know, through whether it was social media, we also have the workshops, you know, the two workshops that are in the envision phase. We're also considering doing another survey during the envision phase to try to garner more support or feedback, I guess. With, I would just say, I would try to also rely on similar or other community agencies to kind of help spread the word. I think that kind of helps if there's like a downtown business organization that can help also release on social media, like any key milestone updates to attend meetings. That's always helpful to kind of spur attendance at these, at the community workshops.
Thank you.
Anybody here have any comments, questions? Joe?
Along those same lines, 80% of the 2% would support a tax levy to, to affect any changes and modifications. But in the interview groups that you did, one of the bullet points you had on them said, no new taxes to support this.
I saw no referendum.
No referendum for it. So is that somebody not understanding home rule when they say no referendum for it? Or is it somebody?
Possibly not. The last time that we had the opportunity for state funding to remove the dam, they utilized the referendum in order to gauge whether there was enough popular support for it and it failed.
That makes more sense because when I look at those two things, the way I was looking at that referendum being a tax issue was we got one group saying yes and another group saying no. Communication and education, which was also pointed out on one of the slides, is going to be critical.
Absolutely.
Abby?
Yeah, along those same lines. And I was wondering if there was any plan to do any polling so that we could get a more representative sample because I worry about that too. And we've seen, we've seen past surveys and the self-selection bias or whatever bias it is that works into what we think the community is going to support. And then when it does go to referendum, it fails. So
Right. As Lacey said, there, this is not the end of the, the public input phase. There will be the development of alternatives that which are based on the information that has been collected up to this point in both the analyze and engage phases. And then the community will again be invited in to vet those various alternatives and provide their input on those. And then we can further gauge which one of those alternatives garners the most, most support and how.
Yeah, I would, I would still recommend polling, just to say like, this is what you, this is what you'd like to see, but what are you likely to support? You know, what, what are you willing to pay for and what messaging gets you there? And that kind of polling practice, I think, would go a long way.
For the Park District, I think we have to run to another meeting here in a minute, but I would appreciate getting, getting a copy of this so we could review it. And if we have any questions, we can kind of push back the other way. It was a lot of 122 pages, a lot of material to cover in 60 minutes. So.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, Mark, yeah?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I think it's really good information and nice to see kind of compiling all the different studies and all the different master plans that are out there because it's really important to have that feedback. So nice work so far. I'm looking forward to seeing some of the conception stuff.
So Alan, if you don't mind, I would entertain a motion for the practice to adjourn to our regular board meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Motion by Tillman, second by Gray. Debbie, please call her all.
Oh, Debbie, you're on mute. Oh, you're still on mute.
There you go.
Looking now? Okay, sorry about that. Tillman?
Hi.
Gray? Riley?
Hi.
Molly?
Hi.
And Callahan.
I'm actually carries. Lacey and John, thanks very much this evening for the presentation. City Council, thanks very much for hosting us tonight and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Alrighty.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And we had some comments from the audience. We got time for a couple of people. You want to come up and use the microphone up here at the podium?
Hi, I was just wondering, they did identify that like restaurants using some of the riverfront space better for businesses. Are there any grants or any kind of funding that's available to businesses to retrofit any properties that are already along? I mean, that might be something that Hitchcock can look into or find out about.
Yeah, that would be something we'd have to look at what funding sources would be available for anything that's not in a TIF district or you know, wouldn't be available of any of the grants that are already available in the TIF districts.
Or with the TIF district? I'm just wondering if that's, those funds can be used.
That would be the only thing the city would have at this point.
Right.
Would be what's in the TIF districts.
Right. And my question would be for Hitchcock if they had information on other funding options.
Okay, that's something we can explore.
Yeah, we'll explore options for them.
Question about, they were talking about that they, you know, and this is maybe here's, I've just kind of come up with that, that the state of Illinois is willing to put money in to take the dam out. But then it says in there that we can actually modify the dam. So is that something that the state would, would put money towards that? In other words, instead of taking a dam out, we can modify?
We'd have to have a plan to go to the state to ask them what they would support. I'm sure that if it was a modification in past history, there would be less support from the state and it would be more local money that would have to pay for that.
But they wouldn't restrict us from actually doing it though.
They'd have to see the plan.
Because the way I understand it is that we can't repair the dam.
Right.
But, you know, so that's why I'm, I'm a little fuzzy on that. It's like, well, if we can't repair it, but we can modify it. I'm in favor of that, you know, but okay.
Yeah, I would let John probably, what do you kind of respond? There's many ways that you can obviously based on the type of dam and the current condition of the dam, some may necessitate full removal. Other dam styles may have options of like notching the dam, which essentially allows for passage of non-motorized vehicles and fish passage. So it just kind of depends on the current condition of the, of the dam, what style of dam it is and, and what might be the outcomes from that. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add with that, John?
Do we have one more?
You're muted, John.
As mentioned before, you know, I think we'd have to, we'd have to vet options with IDNR. But traditionally they will, they've been funding dam removals partially or fully. So that would be, I believe, probably the preferred option or the more, most supportive, any additional modifications, you know, additional dams upstream. As I mentioned, may require more local support and funding.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm curious. I, unless I missed it, was a step dan addressed in any of these proposals specifically?
That's one of the options.
That was one of the options. Okay. Because part of just the visual experience, if you go to Yorkville, is you can see how the water is maintained very nicely with the step dan. As well as that they have an area of rapids to the one side of it. In part because it keeps with the history of how the dam has been. That you have this piece that holds the water at a certain level, which might maintain the pond. It seemed cost effective. It seemed appropriate. It seemed as something that would keep the water at the same level visually as you look north. I don't know. I cannot absorb all this at this time. I'm going to have to look at BAT TV and see what else I can figure out about it. But our residents in our neighborhood have been talking about this quite a bit. We're going to have a series of more caucuses. We're going to have more caucuses with our neighbors about this because we have concerns about what may happen with the depot pond. We have concerns about dredging. We have concerns about cost factors, about taxation. We have a lot of concerns. And I hear the 2% that's been interviewed, but I also wonder about the number of older people that may not have been aware this was going on. Because when this has been discussed in my neighborhood, people go, what are you talking about? So I would say to you, I think more needs to be done. And I'm a little concerned that we've sort of put the cart before the horse to have all this come up is how it's going to be done without more feedback from the community.
Well, this is really in the infancy of the planning stage. So you are right at the very beginning of it. That's what this is all about.
Okay.
Is really in step one.
Okay, but I'm merely putting those points out.
Okay.
You know, I was real concerned. I think when you look at the demographic, the age group, I'm also looking at what people who are older want within the downtown. This is where a lot of them live. So just to point that out. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. It's also important that those diagrams are from 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's, that's just what was thought of before. And so, and they'll also have other designs coming forward.
I mean, you've seen your housing downtown. So, you know, fantasy kind of comes, gee, what could those people walk to right in downtown? Are there chess tables? Are there little picnic tables? There's a couple. Are there food carts that can advertise the downtown for all the restaurants that are here? What are the kind of services that are right here already? What could be expanded? Is the park fieldhouse even used or staffed? Can people get bad indents? Can people get things? When I was a kid, we used to be able to get stuff from the park fieldhouse. I believe we have, are there two park fieldhouses right now? One on the east side, one on the west side?
I'm not sure. That might be a question for the park.
Park district. There's a park district. Main office on the side of the river and then the
But I really feel the downtown, as far as that part of it to be utilized, I kind of wonder why more isn't being done already. It's there. So anyway.
That's part of why we're discussing this.
Yeah, I agree. And part of even bringing this up now is to say, well, gee, these are other things to look at. And I look forward to more caucuses and more, more involvement with this as we
And we've really identified that at least most of us in the council feel like the communication part of this is key because everything that's ever gone to referendum in town without great communication fails. And fails miserably.
I'm old enough to go back when this played back with Sierra Club coming in with all the theater. I get it. This won't be an easy ride on many levels, but historically Batavia gets through it. Okay, thanks.
We will.
One thing I didn't mention was as people come to the microphone, if they could identify just your name, we don't need your address or anything.
I'm happy to be Rex Summerman, 300 North Water.
Okay. Marilyn Weir and and Dave Weir and just for our, for Jenny.
Right.
Recording all of the comments.
Okay, well, if you don't have anything else.
Okay.
We can adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All is in favor? Hi.
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 Okay, we are adjourned from our special meeting. We will take about a three-minute break and then we will start the next meeting at 7:10.
And Anthony, I need you to end that meeting. I wasn't able to launch the next until this one ends.
I will end it now, Laura.
Thank you.
No problem.